Alright, so we're gonna call to order at 7 or 6. And I'm gonna apologize now because I'm losing my voice, so it's gonna be interesting tonight. Um, we stand for the Pledge of Before we go to approval of the agenda, I would just like to recognize the Mill River Football Team for making it to the semifinals. And congratulations even though they lost, but we have not actually made it to semifinals in a couple decades, I think. So, just wanna say congratulations. Um, okay, so can I have approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Excuse me Chair, do you have an extra pen?
Mm-hmm. I do. Here, do you want me to just send?
I got one, I got one. There you go. Thanks. Fast one. I'm a derrily.
You have it?
We're good, we're good.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Um, any public input or announcements? I didn't get any, so...
I had not gotten any, uh, anybody here for a public comment? Okay.
Um, okay, so approval of minutes for, um, 11-2.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion on them?
So weird. I don't know, Blake Cowherd was spread out, but...
Um, all in favor? No, I said we're all spread out.
I know, I was gonna move Josh and be like, "Josh, could you sit over here?"
No, it's fine. Um, okay, on to Clarendon Updates.
Is that us?
Yep, absolutely.
That's you.
Do you want the lights off for that Jane?
Um, Paula's gonna take care of it for us.
Okay, awesome.
Um, welcome everybody. Thank you for those of you that came on the tour, I hope you enjoyed it. Um, I'm Jane Richards, I'm the principal, um, not so new principal anymore, been here a little bit, uh, here at Clarendon, and tonight we are going to, I will get this up for you. We are going to do a presentation, um, kind of going over what's happening here at Clarendon in our primary grades. Um, we're gonna hear about, predominantly focusing on, um, ELA, uh, here at Clarendon. And then we are going to have some information about what's happening in our grades 3 through 6. And then Paula and I will kinda take over and talk about things that have been happening in general here, so... So this is Wendy West, Wendy is, um, one of our special educators and she is in charge of our foundations program. Um, Kelly Markowski, Markowski is another one of our special education, special educators, and she works with 3 through 6. And Paula Reynolds is our friends counter.
I'm going to talk a little about, um, pre-K to grade 2nd. The foundational reading skills, um, provide instruction at each grade level by the ELNIC best practices. And ELNIC stands for Early Literacy Network Improvement Community. And our instruction is based on initial screening assessments and ongoing progress monitoring. So for screening for foundational reading skills, baseline data. In August and September, we administer screening assessments to gather baseline data about a pre-K to grade 2 learner's foundational reading skills. So foundational reading skills means concepts about print, so how books work, like what is the cover, what is the title, the author, what a word is. Letter name recognition, naming the 26 uppercase letters and the 26 lowercase letters. Letter sound correspondences, so identifying the sounds for all letters. Phoneme awareness, understanding that the spoken words are made up of individual sounds, being able to isolate the beginning, middle, and ending sound in spoken words. Blending and segmenting sounds. When we talk about decoding, we're talking about blending sounds to read words. And encoding is segmenting sounds to spell words. We, we record our baseline data, um, in a school-wide literacy assessment sheet. We look at overall grade level trends, so which foundational skills may have been mastered, which skills need review, or if some have not been introduced yet, they might need explicit instruction. And we use this information to guide our whole class instruction. We also use baseline data to differentiate classroom instructions to meet students' specific skill needs. Our reading interventionists examine this baseline data and classroom formative data to help them identify students that may benefit from additional reading interventions. Kindergarten in action. So the kindergarten teacher Shannon Phillips and the reading interventionist Mary Beth Monahan have collaborated to implement a new evidence-based approach to building alphabet knowledge based on the ELNIC project. Um, and there's some links that take you to a scope, uh, scope and sequence on how they're taught in Alphabet Lesson Plan Template. In January, they will reassess the kindergartner's alphabet knowledge, the names, and the sounds, and will compare the results of the fall base, to the fall baseline and to last year's January data to ga, gauge the impact of this new approach. So in the past, um, past practice was to teach one letter at a time, which meant certain letters were not taught till the end of the year, even though they show up in print throughout the year. With this new approach, multiple level, letters are taught at the same time. So we'll see how these did with the approach last year of teaching one letter at a time, and how the new approach, um, compares. And when we talk about, um, so just kind of a sad note, at, at the end of kindergarten, kindergarten, students are expected to be able to encode and decode all 21 consonant letters and their corresponding sounds, five short vowel sounds, as well as five consonant digraphs in one syllable words in isolation and in a text. Grade 1.
Just have a quick question. Can, um, the public access those two websites, just to back up to the kindergarten thingy?
So...
Link to scope and sequence and link to alphabetical lesson plan templates?
We can make them available for sure. Uh, we're not going over it now, in fairness, because the presentation was much longer. And recognizing that we each have five minutes, we had to cut down, so the show was focused on kindergarten first grade, but we can absolutely make those available to you, so you can...
And, and we'll get this presentation in the minutes, so that anybody who wants to look later can find it.
Well, it's just me.
Yeah, yeah.
Ask a quick question, as long as we started asking questions. When it's, um, when they're learning letters, and you said some, you're learning them together, are they learning them like in terms of the alphabet, or like THs together? What's the point of the...
I believe, and I can't speak for Shannon, but I think connecting it to writing, so like TD and F would be taught kind of first, because they're all formed the same way.
Okay.
Top to bottom. And then like M and M would be taught together because of the way that they're formed the same way. So we're teaching the handwriting piece also along with the letters. Um, grade 1 in action, explicit systematic phonics instruction with decodable texts. Um, grade 1 teacher Julia Weinman is now in her second year of the ELNIC project and has been implementing several research-based practices that promote strong decoding skills. She's directly teaching new phonics patterns, um, and it's outlined in a grade 1 scope and sequence, but after I will tell you a little bit about what those patterns are. And providing ongoing review and practice until students achieve mastery. Using sound boxes to help students map each letter to its corresponding sound. Building a library of decodable books, which are books that have the words with the phonics pattern students have been taught. Um, and this allows students to apply what they have learned. So in kindergarten, I said they need to know the 21 consonant letters and sounds, the five short vowel sounds, and five consonant digraphs. At the end of first grade, students are expected to be able to decode and encode words containing welded sounds, bonus letters, blends, suffixes, vowel consonant E words, closed syllables, open syllables with the five long vowel sounds, in multi-syllabic words in a text. So it is a large jump in, um, ability between the end of kindergarten and the end of first grade. And then a little bit about foundation. So, um, thank you for those who came over and visited the building. If anyone else would like a tour any other time, I am, um, very proud of the building, very proud of our students, and I absolutely love this program. Um, I do have, just for some background, background information, we have 10 students pre-K to 7th grade this year. We get to do a little bit of extra things through the program. Last summer and this fall, we were able to work with the Rainbow Writing Center, and you can see a little, some of our students were used in their promotional fundraiser flyer. Uh, we had five students, um, that participated in that. Three in the summer, we added two in the fall, and then students who have been joining us throughout the school year, um, we will continue that in the spring, so they'll be able to join in the spring. We are using the kitchenette part of our building to provide snacks and drinks to the students, as many of our families struggle with food insecurity. Our 7th graders, in addition to one 6th grader, go shopping on Tuesdays and purchase ingredients to cook either a meal or treat for themselves, and on Wednesdays they cook. They have done zucchini bread, um, they use zucchini from the summer camp's garden for that. They've done English muffin pizzas, grilled cheese sandwiches, cookies, and peanut butter fudge. Um, and somebody on the tour mentioned it's kind of like a home-like atmosphere, and that is kind of what we kind of make it. Um, a warm, comfortable, loving place for them to learn academics, but also learn social skills, and that, um, the world is a good place, and school's a good place to be.
Um, are there any questions before we head into the 3-6 part of our presentation?
Yeah.
I have a question. Um, is the ELNIC program, is that, is that used across all of our buildings, all of our K-1 programs?
So there is a cohort of teachers, uh, that are participating in it, uh, and I think they are teachers from different buildings. Uh, right now, I know that our reading interventionist, uh, Mary Beth Monahan is part of that, uh, and she and Kathleen Harrington, who I think is at the tournament?
Kathleen splits time, I think.
Yeah, so the two of them do a lot of work with the work from the ELNIC to provide resources to teachers. Uh, and so we are fortunate enough to have Julia, who, uh, is part of that group, and actually, a couple of our other teachers have since, uh, joined into the group as well. It is additional, uh, work after school, but I know that there are other teachers in other buildings.
Is it like a pilot for the district, or...
Um, it's really more of like a class, like a, like a class that they've been taking, or a group that they've been participating in?
The Agency of Education has, has rolled this out, and I think it's, it's very safe to say that participation in our district is at a much higher level than other districts. Other districts might have a teacher or two or three. We have the strongest team, which I, I think is pretty, pretty important to recognize. Actually, if you notice, Jody's not here tonight, she's down in DC with Deborah Gardner-Bosh, who leads up our intervention team, and I think some of our interventionists went as well, as part of this work, working with experts in the field. So this is, when you read articles about the science of reading, and how that's the latest, uh, research-based trend to look at early literacy, uh, these are folks who are on the cutting edge of doing that work, and we're plugged into that. And, and I think awesome that you heard Wendy sharing that the team is trying something new this year, and they're gonna compare it directly to how their strategies last year worked. So we're not just doing it because it's the latest greatest, we're gonna look and see if it actually works and makes a difference. But I think pretty important work for us to be plugged into.
Yeah. And we've been talking a lot, uh, a lot about it in our ESTs, uh, especially with the primary grades, and looking at, um, the progress that students are making doing ELNIC work, but also in comparison to, um, traditional assessments that we already have in place District Y. Uh, so we were talking today how we kind of have this opportunity to be able to compare, uh, strategies that are taking place based off the scientific research that they're learning through the ELNIC work and just traditional practices.
Thank you.
So, uh, transitioning from there, so the ELNIC work kind of leads into what we've been doing in our PLCs, um, again, looking at research-based practices for, uh, English language arts, so reading and writing. Uh, and one of the research-based practices that a lot of teachers have, uh, taken to, especially in 3 through 6, is writing with a purpose and writing to an audience. So, uh, Kelly, can you talk to you about some of the work that some of our 3-6 teachers have been doing?
Okay. Hi, um, this is my sixth year here at Clarendon Elementary. Um, so it was pretty cool to take some of this stuff on this year. Um, we decided in 3 through 6 to show some of the things, like Jane said, that we've been working on, um, and give you some examples. So, this slide right here, this is Fran. Fran is a teacher in grade 3. When she was asked why she loves teaching, she responded with, "She loves teaching because she loves to see student growth, especially when they work really hard at something and it finally clicks." She loves when they get excited about their learning and when they work hard to meet their goals. She loves to see their little personalities emerge, and she loves being part of their journey. I know it's kind of hard to see, but those are graphic organizers right there that the students have made, little like, ooh! Oh no! Okay. Um, I will keep going. And, um, in that middle there, when that pops back up, that is actually a rough draft that a student had written, and, um, I was able to get a picture of. So, in Fran's class, students were given a free write narrative prompt. The story had to include three things: a purple wig, a crystal ball, and a metal spoon. Students started by creating graphic organizers, so that included all the story elements such as setting, plot, problem, solution, characters, and point of view. Once Fran effectively teaches each item in the rubric, she plans to share this rubric with the learners. She will teach them how to use the rubric to help them with peer conferencing, as well as a self-reflection tool. They will use this rubric to help them figure out where their strengths are in writing and where they need improving. And, um, these slides, the next two slides, are actually, Fran, um, included some statements in her, um, slides. This first one says, "We know our students are growing in writing because they are more eager to write, they have more stamina for writing, and they are excited to share their writing. We also know our students are in need of support in writing because they continue to struggle with the mechanics of writing and the organization of events. To support our students, we plan to conference with each learner about their writing, provide whole group and small group mini lessons on mechanics of writing and organization of writing. We will know if the strategy is successful if students' mechanics of writing have improved when they write independently and their writing pieces are well organized." Up in 5th and 6th grades, we have a service provider, Sarah Williams, that helps out with a lot of our special education students and their needs. She's doing a phenomenal job with these kiddos and has taken on some really neat lessons. Oh, sorry, go back, I never read hers. Oh. Sarah told me she loves teaching because every day she gets the opportunity to make a difference in a child's life. She gets to be another person that believes in them and another person to help them see their potential. And then this.
Oh no, it's frozen up there.
Oh no! Alright, well, eventually it's going to switch. When it switches, you are going to see about Ms. Williams' Pickle Project. I don't know if you know it or not, but Monday was National Pickle Day. This has become a yearly tradition here at Clarendon Elementary School. Some staff members, including myself, even have shirts made up for it. But this year was the first year that Sarah turned it into a writing project, as well as all the math that she incorporates with surveys, graphing, and counting. Using the ELNIC outline, Sarah came up with a reason to write, she created a plan of steps to complete. She, with the help of her students, surveyed other students in the lunchroom on their favorite pickle flavor after the taste tested. And then Mrs. Williams' students began writing opinion pieces on their own personal favorite pickle flavors, which they plan to finish later this week. This has become a yearly tradition, the kids and adults love it. And, oh, by the way, dill pickle one. And then this is just some pictures. Oh, you skipped past! That's some pictures from Pickle Day. The kiddos loved it. Alright, and then there's my sweet kiddos. Here's all my sweet kiddos there, there's three of them up there. Um, I wanna start by telling you why I love teaching. I love teaching because even though I have IEPs to follow, I also have the ability to be creative and make learning fun. I enjoy that every day is different and a fresh start. I love when students ask how long until they get to come to my room, this shows me that they enjoy their learning. I'm happy that my students feel safe with me and feel comfortable talking with me. I really enjoy it when I have students for a couple of years, so that I can see the growth over a length of time. And before I read this, I just wanna give you this, because I know that you can't see up there, and that he did ask the moms and dads permission. I can't read it, it sounds...
I think we're sharing.
So that's in my group with my kiddos, um, all these, all three of these kiddos I've worked with for anywhere between two and five years, depending on the child. Uh, I challenged them in September to come out of their shells and interview the three new staff members here at CES. This was our reason to write. We created a plan of steps to complete, came up with questions, and I should say, they came up with questions. I challenged them, and they came up with questions, and then even on the spot, when I had a student interviewing Ms. Richards, she was like, "What's your favorite flower? What's your favorite, I won't say food or something," like she was coming up with all these additional ones, and I'm like, "Woo, type!" Um, so it was a lot of fun, they really, really loved it. Um, they conducted the interviews and then turned the question and answers into complete sentences. We edited our work according to their IEP goals, and then asked permission to present these interviews during a school-wide assembly. They were all super excited until that morning when the cold feet set in. I had invited all of their parents because I was praying that it would go so well, and none of these children really present, they're not, you know, they're, they're the shy ones and don't want to present, they don't want to present. So I was really excited to see them present. Um, I did accommodate for them, and prior to this happening, I recorded each one of them reading independently in my room, so that in the event that cold feet set in, I had sent them to Ms. Richards and she could broadcast it up there for everybody to watch. Um, we practiced reading as well that morning, they read by themselves, I accommodated according to their needs, and we practiced reading together, the two of us, myself and that student. And then we also practiced reading, you read two sentences? I'll read two sentences, you read two sentences? And, um, in the end, the boys both chose to do two sentences, two sentences, and the little girl up there, she looked at me right up here, right up when we were, um, reading, and she goes, "I got this." And she read it all by herself. Um, this was our presentation to an authentic audience. This writing project, I was so, like, I was in tears over it, I was so super proud of it, and everybody in the school has commented how wonderful that went, so I've decided this is going to be a yearly project for me. This is something I'm gonna do every year. Um, and I was questioned today, actually, in our PLC, "What are you gonna do when there's no new staff?" And of course, to my staff, I was like, "Well, I could always interview new students, so if there's a new student in 5th grade, someone could interview that student and share that information." But then also I got thinking, "I've got tons of staff members here who have been here with Ms. Reynolds for years, that, how cool would that be to interview her and share stuff about her personal life, her dog's name, her cat's name, her children, you know where they are, with all the students?" So, whether I have new staff or not, that's my plan for every year. So, I think I'm done.
Any questions, or Kelly?
No, it's great. It's, and it's not for your client, but when we're doing like the writing for a purpose, are they getting, you know, we're doing handwriting, but are they also doing typing at the same time? Like they're doing both forms of when they're trying to do, come up with stories or write the narratives?
They type those.
Yeah, they type those.
Yeah, they type those. I do rough drafts in handwriting. Um, I do have students who obviously have difficulty with spelling, with writing, and I scrag for them. Um, and then when I scrive, they either copy it over in their own handwriting, or they type it out. I accommodate any way a child needs to, and same with the classroom teachers. But yeah, we usually do rough drafts in hand, written, and then file drafts, print, so... But it all depends on the child's needs.
I just know at this point in my life, if I try to write a whole bunch, my brain is too fast for like how my hand works, so it's like, you know...
Well, this was done over a matter of a couple weeks.
Yeah.
And, um, the Pickle Project, Ms. Williams, they're writing their final drafts this week, um, after they did their thing, you know, that's gonna take throughout the week. Um, but when my students, and I probably should have mentioned this, when my students were interviewing, they brought their computer, they shared their document with me, I brought my computer, I was sitting next to them. As they were interviewing, they were trying to type, clearly they couldn't type fast enough because they were excited, they were talking, so I ended up taking over, and on my end, anything they missed, I was typing, as well as they were typing, so...
There's nothing wrong with handwriting, by the way.
There's nothing wrong with it, I have no idea what you mean by that. Alright, so principals report, so, um, one of the things I'm most passionate about is PBIS, so it's Positive Behaviors Interventional Support. Um, and when I found out that Clarendon was a PBIS school, I was just immediately like, "Yes!" Um, one of the things I quickly learned was we haven't updated our program since 2013, so that's almost a decade ago, and lots have changed. Uh, both population in our schools and needs of our students and our staff has changed. So when we think about the program that we had in place, it was created by staff who may or may not still be here. Paula is still here, wonderful Paula is still here, um, but a lot of the staff members have moved on. Um, so we have chosen, in addition to all of this ELNIC work and the science-based research that we do in our after-school PLC meetings, uh, the other focus that we've taken on this year is a whole staff, so that we all are part of the creation of this revamped program, um, is PBIS. And so, you see up here, we have some of our students, um, every time they meet a school-wide expectation, and the whole purpose of PBIS is proactive teaching of school-wide expectations, and what are our expectations in learning. So every time, um, students are in class, they're learning these expectations, and what does it look like in our classroom, what does it look like in the cafeteria, what does it look like out at recess? Uh, and we're working on teaching those expectations in those areas. Uh, they are acknowledged for things. So I say every time, it's not every, at the beginning of the year, we definitely front-loaded it, and we were rewarding them with, we started a marble jar system this year. Uh, and as a class, they're working together, so they can earn a marble as an individual, they could earn a marble as a class, for, "Wow, you are all sitting so respectfully, and you are showing me that you are listening and engaging, I'm gonna give you all a marble right now." And we put it in the jar. Um, it sounds silly, and sometimes we question, "Are kids really gonna buy into this?", but they have. Uh, and when their class jar is filled, they earn a class celebration, so they're working as a community to earn something together. Celebration could be a PJ day, it could be going outside and having some extra recess. Uh, but one of the things that I love is this weird ping pong structure that we have, they come down to me in the office, and every kiddo in the class gets a ping pong ball to put towards a whole school celebration. Uh, and this year, we had our first whole school celebration in October, happened to fall, magically it landed on Halloween, and we decided as a whole school, we were gonna have a costume, uh, a costume parade slash popcorn and dance party. And we had a parade outside of all of our costumes, uh, the, uh, I'll get that word here, so, um, I'll, I'll skip ahead to that part so you can see it. Um, we had all of our costumes on, and we danced around, and we paraded, and every class got to walk around and show off their costumes, and at the end, we danced to Monster Mash and just had a great time. Uh, but this is how we're celebrating all of their efforts as a whole school. Uh, I know a lot of times people think of PBIS and it's just, "Oh, they get a prize, they get a token, they get this," but really, the reinforcement is being specific when you hand off that marble. Uh, and it's really working together as a community and teaching in that community, which I think is one of the best things that I've found about Clarendon, is just how strong this community is, uh, from the teachers and the students to the families and, I mean, the community at large. Uh, it's one of the things that I really love. So, kind of going out of order of my presentation, oop, there we go. So here are our staff members, these are our summer, um, PD days that we've had, and some of our early release, the early release PD day we just had, um, was it Monday?
Yeah, yeah.
Whoa, okay, sorry, we all blended together now. Uh, and our after-school meetings. So one of the first things that we're doing, if you look at this triangle, it talks about the different levels of PBIS, there's a universal system, which is for all learners, uh, which is what we're working on as a whole school to develop our handbook. And the handbook- And the handbook is really for the grownups to all be on the same page and understanding of the language that we use and the strategies that we use. And then it goes up from there, which is kind of my long-term goal, is to work towards the targeted level and then the intensive level. But the first thing we did as a staff was to look at our statement of purpose. And I had them in a staff meeting and they all looked at me and they're like, well, we have foundational leases as a district. I said, okay, so like, how would you tie that into what we're trying to do here with PBIS? And again, our handbook is a working document and things change and evolve, but our initial statement of purpose is, in order to promote a learning environment where everyone feels cared for and loved, we will proactively teach and reinforce positive behaviors so that through their actions and words, our learners can create a positive learning environment for everyone. And so, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit to how are some of the ways that we proactively teach things and how.
Yeah, oh, so just a little bit about me, I've been in this school for 33 years. I started as a phys ed teacher and then after 29, moved on to being a school counselor. So we are very proactive in this school and as a whole unit, we try to get ahead of behaviors, we try to get ahead of problems. If a child is struggling, you can see it by building relationships with kids. Every morning I'm at the front door and I greet every single kid that comes in, that is that relationship building. So being proactive means teaching, guiding, encouraging, and leading by example, and also being there for ups, downs, all around, right? We always talk about the whole child. Some days you find me with one student doing individual counseling, sometimes it would be teaching social emotional learning, communication skills, or how to deal with conflict. Other days you might see me supporting an individual child in my room who's having a really rough day. Other days, I could be doing small group, we do, we are fortunate to have another counselor come in one day a week to do guidance lessons for every classroom, which is fabulous and it takes that away from me so I can work with individuals or small groups. But every day, our whole school, our, all of our staff works to ensure that everybody is set up for success, the success, they get to the success by having their needs met. And that's really important because it could be food, it could be sleep, it could be hugs, it could be anything, but if a child's needs are met, then they're going to be flourishing. That's how we are proactive.
So, I know we're going a little long and I apologize, but one of the things I wanted to highlight, in the middle there, towards the bottom, is a group of our sixth graders. We have monthly character traits that each of the classrooms learns about in their own way, so it looks different in kindergarten than it does in sixth grade, but each month, one grade level is responsible for presenting what they've learned about the character traits. And October, sixth grade presented to the whole school, in addition to Kelly's students came and presented their pieces to the whole school, so we had all 170 kids and all the staff, everybody was here. And they talked about fairness and flexibility, and I thought it was really wonderful because they showed, they shared their posters and saw all the little kids like kind of sitting there being polite and nodding and, and then they did this skit and I saw some of our learners who are super quiet normally, get up there and they, they were just theatrical and I looked at Bonnie Richard and I said, how did you do this? She said, it's them, it's them, this is, and she said, you know, she herself loves, loves theater too, but they got up there and we had a doctor, and the doctor had several patients, and the first patient had a cut on the back of their neck, so he ripped open a Band-Aid and he slapped the Band-Aid on the back of the neck and said, alright, who's next, who else is hurt? Everybody came up, one had a finger, one had a broken leg, one had something, and everybody got a Band-Aid on the back of their neck. And he said, is that fair? And the whole school was like, well, no, that's not fair, that, he said, he said, you know, everybody doesn't get the same thing, so fair is not always equal. And it was interesting to see the little kids kind of go, oh, you know, kind of that light click on, so it was really great to see the older kids modeling that. And this month, we're really looking forward to our fifth graders who will be presenting about empathy. So kind of sure am I getting something, but just really proud of all the work that the kids are doing and that the staff is doing and they're working really hard and, yeah, tomorrow we have our Thanksgiving luncheon. Cat's out of the bag, I told these guys, but Fred will be coming back to surprise everybody tomorrow, so we're excited to have him back and we're welcoming in, we found out tonight, 101 parents or grownups, people, special caretakers in people's lives will be joining us for lunch tomorrow. And then in December, we have our winter program, so we have our winter music program with our band and our chorus, and we're looking forward to that. We will have the revival of our holiday store for kiddos to be able to get presents for family members, so lots, lots happening, lots of community building and, yeah. And know that you're always welcome, the door is always open for you to come in, experience it when the kids are here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, any questions?
Thank you.
I know, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope folks heard too, when Kelly was sharing about the upper grades, that same idea of things aren't perfect. We know our kids are doing well in some areas, we know they're struggling in some areas, we're working to address where they're struggling, we're going to check in and see how it's going. Thank you all and I, I'm sure the board is comfortable with you all going home now, you can absolutely stay, but we know you have busy, busy jobs, so feel free.
Get that rest for the luncheon tomorrow. I said you got to get rest for the luncheon.
Network, oh my gosh, I wrote that, I always do it.
We found it.
Networked improvement.
Yeah.
Community.
Thank you. I knew the scene was coming. So we're ahead of schedule, but we're on to budget information.
Okay, budget. So we had a finance meeting and I'm not going to remember off the top of my head, was that last week?
On the first.
It was on the first. And that was our last combined buildings and grounds finance meeting. We were doing our agenda building at last meeting and it seemed appropriate to share with the full board a little bit about how that budget process is going again. I think something that we talked a lot about in the spring was trying to be incredibly clear about our communication around budget and how we're approaching that process earlier on in the process. So I recommended we throw this agenda item on there, just so that we can get this in a full board meeting and we can share some of those details. Liz had sent on the budget summary, that was the document that we used at that November 1st budget meeting to start our conversation. We have been tasked with coming up with several proposals that we're going to go into further detail at our coming meeting, which is actually this Monday, this Monday at 6:00 PM. We're going to have-
That's the 21st.
Yeah, that's the 21st, exactly right, Lynn. We are going to host any of the public or any of our staff at 5:15 at the Mill River Library before that for a conversation, informal conversation, and then we're going to have our finance committee meeting at 6:00 PM where we will have some of those details. I wanted to hit on some of the highlights of that summary sheet and see if we had any questions, any things we wanted to talk about that, keeping in mind that we're going to have far more details on Monday and we're going to have proposals that get into the weeds and tonight is not necessarily the time to get into the weeds. We shared a couple of interesting implications that are really statewide implications. One is healthcare increase, you know, we're looking at about a 12-something percent healthcare increase, which is a challenge as all districts go into budgeting season this year. Other insurances are up around 6%, which is a challenge and you've all experienced heating oil, diesel, materials, all the things that we're purchasing, you know, talk to BJ about tech purchases, we're seeing inflation at varying levels in all those things, which everybody across the state is dealing with, across the country is dealing with. Another interesting implication leading into budget season right now is that last year, the state used, what was the number, 42? No. How, how? $45 million to supplement the education fund. That $45 million that the state used of surplus money lowered the tax rate significantly. So a lot of folks would have seen a fair bit of relief on their taxes last year, not because we did anything. And that surplus of $45 million is highly unlikely to be around this year. So that decrease of the tax rate is going to be an automatic increase of the tax rate. Everybody across the state is dealing with that, that's something that we don't control. So that's definitely a challenge as we go in. Another challenge, we started looking into what have our per pupil expenditure increases been over the last five years? That was a question that we had. We have on average about a 2.2% increase over the last five years. Some years we had a decrease, some years we had a moderate increase. On average, it's been 2.2. So over the last five years, if you argue that we've been somewhat fiscally responsible by cutting areas where we could cut, at some point in time, you can no longer do that. So the really interesting idea that when we sit down and we look at ballots on Town Meeting Day, we only see this, the proposed per pupil increase or decrease for next budget. We don't get to see the five-year, 10-year context. Our voters, unless we communicate very clearly with them, do not know, maybe, some of them maybe will, but a lot of our voters may not know that over the last five years, we've had a 2.2% increase and that that's fairly reasonable when you look at cost of living increases, you look at a raise for staff every year, you look at healthcare costs going up every year. They're going to see one number when they come to the ballot on Town Meeting Day and our job is to give them the context before Town Meeting Day to understand that number. Because of all those things that I was talking about, we are looking at a fairly high number right now to maintain what we have. We're looking at about a 10% increase per student to maintain what we have.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry, 10% increase per?
Per student, the cost per student, which is the only thing folks are going to see on the ballot. And, and as we lose students, the cost per student goes up. So the cost per student going up is not always because we're adding to the budget, sometimes it's because we've lost several students. And the way the state deals with that, if we lose a bunch of students, maybe right at the start of the pandemic, we don't feel the pain of losing all those students in one year. That pain gets spread out over several years. So while this year, we are not necessarily seeing a large decrease, we're having some decreases from previous years that are actually carrying over into this year because the state averages those so that we don't always get the pain in one fell swoop. Liz?
I just want to add too, Brian, so I don't remember the name of the legislation, I don't remember the bill number, but folks may recall that the way in which special ed is funded locally just changed. 173. All right, so that added over $500,000 to our budget, so that has had an impact, so I just want, you know, there are factors outside of our control. Furthermore-
And that's affecting people statewide too.
Right, and then as far as the numbers decrease, you know, I would be interested in looking to see, you know, are we losing students per se? Maybe, maybe not, you know, I think if you look at like birth trends, it's fairly flat nationwide, but the state of Vermont, again, don't remember the legislation, 2-something, 270-something maybe, changed the way we calculate the number of students that we serve in the district.
And is that, does that ring a bell, Stan, is that the one that's coming up? That's coming in a couple of years, yeah, that they're going to change-
It hasn't come yet?
That's by 24 will be the last.
Okay, okay, so that's coming.
Yeah, high school students, you get a little more per student than elementary students, than pre-K students, than English language learners, than low socioeconomic status, so different students get slightly different levels of funding.
Right.
That's changing in 2025 and some districts are really in the darker end, what's that actually going to do to our budget? So we do have something coming in a couple of years that's going to throw us another interesting curve ball.
And Stan, maybe you could explain this, if I am not mistaken, we do not calculate our population number locally, is that correct? Does that come from the state or do we do an actual head count?
We supply them the information and they put that together, you know, with their state-
Formula?
State formula.
Do we know what the state formula is?
We give them our ADM numbers and they obviously get the poverty numbers of the region, our district, and that goes all into the calculation.
And just so folks know, ADM is average daily membership.
Number of students that show up on a day.
Right, so basically-
Isn't that a particular date?
It's, it's a range of time in October, it's actually, they look at student attendance for 10 days, what?
20, 20.
20 days in October. So it's really interesting because if we get students that legitimately transfer into the district in November, we don't get funding for them. But if we have students that leave in November, we got funding for them. So the idea is, I think it's a wash, but it is that October period that sets what our average daily membership rate is. The, the shift in education, or the shift in special education funding last year was about a $500,000 shift into our local budget that is not going anywhere. So you can look at that as a $500,000 increase in our local budget. We cut about $400,000 in addition to that, so last year was about an $800,000, $900,000 cut to maintain a moderate increase in budget. So we're looking at five years of fairly moderate increases and, you know, some would argue that because we have been so fiscally responsible and now it's becoming harder, that we get hit with a high number. Where you could argue that districts over the last five years who actually increased, 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 last year would have been a great year to increase if we knew the state was going to put $45 million into the ed fund and drop the tax rate. Districts that increased last year got really lucky with that increase because folks didn't feel it in their tax rate necessarily, and this year they can have a really low increase. So I think the, what we see on the ballot on Town Meeting Day is challenging and I think why we need to work really hard at our finance meeting to sort through these numbers, sort through some of the implications of where we can be as a district to maintain our track record of being fiscally responsible, but to run schools that do some of the great work that you were seeing Jane and Kelly and Wendy and Paula share today, you know, they're, they're, I'll back up a little bit and remind the board, we decided this year we were going to go line by line and build a budget from scratch. We were going to meet with Jane and say, Jane, what do you need? Let's look at these budget lines and let's see, do, do we need these or not? And we found really quickly, we had, we had said before, there aren't many places to cut, we went through and we looked and there aren't many places to cut, which is, is a challenging place to be in with all of these state-level shifts that, that we're seeing. I haven't even mentioned the common level of appraisal. That also ties into our education funding model where if, if homes are appraised at a certain value, but then sale prices are higher than that appraisal rate, our taxes go up to adjust for that, to make sure we're paying our fair share. Because what would keep a town from appraising things really low to keep their tax rate low? Well, if you appraise really low and they sell reasonably, the state adjusts so that your tax rate actually more is equitable across the state. Well, we know that real estate has gone for an interesting ride over the last few years and if we are- And if we are selling above appraisal, that's going to have tax implications, not just for us, but across the state. Stan, have I said anything totally wrong yet?
No. The only thing that was mentioned by Liz and Bucknew is, our district really got hurt by Act 173. We're going to feel the effects every year now. The $500,000, that's just the base amount that we started with. For example, coming in for the FY '24 budget, we get a block grant now for special ed, not based on costs, just based on student numbers and our costs per student in the past. The block grant for FY '24 is only going to be $7,000 more than what we got this year. Our special ed costs are probably going to go up $200,000, $300,000, $400,000, wherever we end up at. So, that, where does that come out of? That comes out of the education spending as part of that increase. And on top of that, throw on that base amount of $500,000, you now see maybe an $800,000 loss of revenue due to that Act 173 funding.
And when special, when students, when students who qualify for an IEP move into our district, we serve them. It's a legal requirement that we serve them. And now, we absorb that cost, which is a challenge. It absolutely is a challenge. I, I, I'll share one last little piece and then I'm done. I checked in with superintendents early this week in the region and, you know, I'm hearing things like, you know, we don't have our budget done yet, but we're not going to be far off from where you are. You know, a district that used a huge amount of surplus to keep their tax rate down, but now doesn't have the surplus to continue doing that. Other folks who are looking at 5%, Stafford tuition increase is 6.5%. I've got a district who's negotiating with teachers and they're looking at about a 10% teacher increase because their district is behind the region in how they pay their teachers. And we have teacher shortages. So, if we're not taking care of our teachers the same way other folks in the region are, you know, it's, it's hard to continue to do what we do as costs continue to escalate. My big ask of the board is, what is our priority? The board drives budget. And we can look at a lot of things in district that we can say are wonderful, valuable things. We want our buildings to look nice and be welcoming. We want to do that work. We want to support our athletic programs because we've heard from the community that, that we need to do better there. We need to maintain our grounds better, we've heard from the community. We want to offer wonderful programs like foundations, that not every district gets to provide something like that. We want opportunities at our high school for our kids to take electives that aren't necessarily offered everywhere. But we lose the opportunity to do some of those things when we're in a funding crunch. My big ask of the board is, what is our vision for the district that we can use the budget to support? Transportation is optional. I'm not going to tell you that we should cut transportation, but it's optional. After-school, after-school programming is, is optional. Pre-K is optional. I'm not going to tell you to cut those things. And I want to be clear with the public that, that those are not recommendations for cuts. But those are things we need to think about when we decide, what is the priority for our district? Because if we have a priority, then the budget can work to meet that goal. The budget is a tool to work toward our goal. But we got to know what that goal is. And, and I, I need that direction to be able to do that work. If we want to be top in the state for athletics, budget will help a heck of a lot to get there. Absolutely. If we want to be top in the state in academics, budget will support that a heck of a lot, too. The intervention work you saw mentioned, the LNIC work that you saw, the extra time that teachers are paying into that, we can do that work, but we can't do all the work when we have limited funds. So, Monday, I'd love to, love to see as many of you, Monday, that can make it in addition to the finance committee so that we can keep that conversation going.
And-
Questions, comments tonight, without getting too far into the weeds?
I guess I would. I'll be there Monday, by the way.
Great, great.
I just, whatever we decide, whether it's to do away with some programs, or, or do away with intervention, or do away, or, or not, I think we need to be very clear to the public-
Absolutely.
That, that, and I know we, I'm not saying we aren't, I'm just saying, I think-
We need to continue to-
This year, more than in the past, we need to be clear to the public that if it's 10%, it's because we're, we're, we're doing what we feel we need to do. And if it's 5%, it means we're not doing this, we're not doing that. And the, the reality is, we can sit around and, and decide, but the real decision comes when the voters vote.
Yep. And I think you make great points. We need to be as clear and transparent as possible at every step of the process. We do need to hear from the public. Wouldn't it be great if we can hear from the public sooner rather than later? But you're right, ultimately, the vote tells us if we're on track or not.
Yep.
I, I would like to dovetail Len's point. Is it possible to have our principals, in their Friday update, ask parents in our schools' communities to, if they are able to make Monday's meeting, please come to Monday's meeting?
I can have them remind folks.
That would be great.
Absolutely.
Because it is about, like, I'm just looking at numbers over here, and back to Stan's point, it's that, that local funding makes a difference, a significant difference. And, you know, the budget that our school leadership has put forth, it, it's a reasonable budget, it's a reasonable budget increase, but we need to know if the public will support it. And it's no additions, it's no cuts. It's to keep everything going, you know, on course.
As it is.
Right.
Right. And so, but to be fully transparent, you know, before we go into a vote scenario, because nobody wants surprises, we need to ensure that folks in our schools' communities are ready to support the budget and our schools, and our public school teachers, and our public school staff. So, it's about educating the public and really getting folks on board because we have had five years of, you know, really strong fiscal management, and we continue to manage our finances very responsibly.
And community support. I think that's the other part of that.
Yes.
You know?
And the, the foundations upgrade that you saw was largely grant funding.
Tremendous.
Replacing this floor in here, grant funding. We're scrambling every way we can find grant funding. Interventionists largely grant-funded right now, have been since we've had them, you know? So, we're, we're trying to do what we can with grant funding to still do some things, but it may sometimes look like we're doing more than we actually are with our local budget, believe it or not. Yeah, Paul?
Brian, what are the chances of getting somebody here from the Rutland Herald when we're talking about some of this, so it gets into the newspaper? I know we've got PEG TV here, but, you know, I think the Herald would be a way to reach a lot of people. So, they would understand some of the machinations of the statewide things that we have to live with, you know, the-
Whether we want to or not. The Herald has, has, they have an awesome program this year where they have offered to us a full page for no cost, black and white, for a very low price for color. And if you didn't see last Wednesday's Rutland Herald, our last page of the, the second sports section. I'll reach out to Jim in the morning.
Did he send it out to the board?
Oh, he did. Okay, cool. I'll reach out to Jim Sabatasso. He is pretty darn good about getting back to us, and he's been coordinating that. I will ask him if it's last minute, but can he attend our finance meeting? And I'll send him materials if he can't. Yeah, that's a great point, Paul.
The other, I said in an email that, like, if, when we're talking to the public and doing this next finance, if we're talking cuts, like having, this is people who are losing their jobs. This is the consequences for our children. The other part of that, that I didn't say in this was like, if we did big cuts last year, what are the opportunity costs we lost? Like, what don't we have now because of the costs? Because as a new member, I don't really, I'm not-
Oh, good point.
I don't know exactly. When I hear that big of a number, it makes me go-
What did we, what did we just get rid of?
Yeah. What did we lose last year?
Can I bring that Monday?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I, like, for, if, if we're having a public, you know, communication, then that's part of trying to get community onboarding, is saying, this is the hard stuff we did last year. If we do hard stuff every single year, what does your school district look like at the end of it? And it's like, do you want to send your kids to that? Do you want the kids who come and are your part-time employees being raised in a district that is, is, is underfunded? And, you know, so it's, it's important that we-
Do we want to bring tuition students in? And if we're not bringing tuition students in, where are they going? Where are they going and how are we making that transition to being a sending, sending towns, not receiving towns?
I'm just going to put out there that I think a 10% increase when you put in CLAs, we're looking at maybe a 12% to 15% increase. I don't know about you guys.
I have-
I don't know. I don't, because we don't have any of the yields.
That, no, I'm saying that, that is a possibility. If they increase the yield, everything is a changed conversation. But I think we need to think about this. I don't, I mean, people are very stressed right now on their, on their finances, and I don't want to cut anything either. But I think we need to, to start thinking about the big picture of where our district is going, because this isn't going to stop this year.
Nope.
They were, when I, I read a calculation of, of, you know, if we have healthcare costs that keep going the way they're going right now, in another five to seven years, we could be at $50,000 a teacher per year for healthcare costs, for a family plan. I mean, how are you going to work that into your budget? How is our, how is this district going to function? Do we want to continue being a district of five schools? Do we want to be a district of elementary schools and go to a choice district? Do we want to combine something? I mean, we have to start thinking about the big picture here. We can't just keep saying, but what we have is wonderful, even if it is, because we might not be able to afford it in five years. And do you want it to go down until we can't, you know, until it dies? Or do we want to be proactive and reimagine it and, and determine our own future, rather than be forced into something? So, I'm just putting that out there. It's a tough, it's a tough situation.
I, I agree with that. I think, you know, at some point, we have to start thinking outside the box of, you know, what are we looking at as a district? And, and not just saying, okay, this is what we did last year, this is what we're going to do again, this is what we're going to do again, that we may need to really, and I agree with you completely, Adrian, we may need to look at the structure as it exists and whether we can fund that or not.
And, and we're seeing our teachers come and present and share about how they're looking at everything they're doing and they're checking in and making sure if it still makes sense or not. And if it doesn't, they're finding something better. We got to do that work, too. Like you said, Len, just rolling everything over and make and do and do the best we can, you know, we, we need to check back in on where are we going? Are we going the right direction? Maybe we shift direction. And that's, that's right in line with my big ask of the board. What's that vision? And then, budget can drive our vision. Budget can get us there, but we got to know where we're going.
And I just, you know, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying, Adrian, because, you know, and Adrian and I have spoken, we kind of agreed on this, this is, this is an ask. You know, we are all lobbyists in our own right, and we have access to the Vermont School Board Association, we have access to local legislators, we have access to our governor. You know, Governor Scott has in the last five years, in order to offset the, the impact of school budgets on the local electorate, you know, there have been cost shifts in health insurance. Because it's true, health insurance, our health insurers ask for double-digit rate increases every year. I've been, I've been doing this for five years. They've asked for double-digit rate increases every year for five years, and they've been granted those rate increases. And so, you know, there is, it gets shifted to who's paying for that. And so, at one point, the governor, you know, there was a, a shift in, in cost share between district and employee. So, there, there are just, there are so many moving parts. And the legislature has talked about in the last couple of years, changing the way we fund our public schools so that it is more equitable. And so, these are ongoing conversations. And again, we are all lobbyists in our own right, and we do have power. We, we have electoral power. So, you know, we can talk to our legislators, we can talk to our senators, we can talk to our school board association, principals association, superintendents associations. I mean, everybody's having these conversations.
Budget was big on Vermont Superintendent Association docket this fall.
Can, Brian, can you and Stan-
And business managers have been talking about it, too.
Right.
Yeah.
Can, can the two of you talk a little bit about, I have heard that larger districts kind of move spending a little bit more readily than smaller districts that, can you talk a little bit about that? That is, am I correct that a larger district has less of an incentive in kind of managing than a smaller district?
I guess I'm not 100% sure.
Y'all stare at Stan. Larger districts have an easier time-absorbing cost because they can shift their spending. It's the same advantage that we've seen when we came in our Act 46 merger. When people in Shrewsbury say, hey, you know, we've lost something in this merger, I said, you know what, we would have lost our school probably by now. Because of the population shifts and, and the volatility in our funding and all that. So, the bigger you get, the, the more flexibility you have in where you can shift your money.
Because you have more-
You just have more to play with.
Okay.
And you start to see things that, you know, class sizes are far more consistent across a bigger district.
Exactly.
The smaller you get, the more, the harder it is to, to have that consistency, just because it doesn't work. You have fewer moving pieces.
Like, in, in Clarendon, we were, we were shown around the building, and there's a classroom with 25 kids. Okay. In a school that has 300 kids, the fact that you have 25 kids in one room means you shift a few. In our case, it means do you start a whole other classroom?
Hire in a teacher.
And, and have another $80,000 of expenditure.
Yep.
You know, for one, you know, possibly one or two kids moving in. But if you had a bigger school, that's much, it's a much easier situation.
And especially if you look at high schools, if you, if you double the size of a high school, I'm making a number up, I just, just be clear, I'm making a number up. If you double the size of a high school, scheduling doesn't get, get, you know, half as hard. Scheduling is so much easier, just because you have far more capacity and more teachers to shift, you know? A small high school, scheduling is really tricky. Because you go, oh, these students that are, that need the AP course, well, the AP math and the AP English have to be in different spots because they can't take them both at the same time versus a large school where, well, I've got two AP teachers.
Or five.
Yeah. Yeah. So, as the moving parts get, you know, you have fewer and fewer, scheduling is a nightmare at a small school to give students lots of opportunities. Double the school, the opportunities don't double, they quadruple, you know? Again, making that math up, but it's, it's, it's not, it's not as, as simple as, you get a lot of efficiency out of scale.
And it's not buying toilet paper.
No.
No.
Before the merger, the highest-spending district was Clarendon, it was the biggest. The best, the lowest spending was Shrewsbury. And then, Timbers was, was next there, then Wallingford was in between Timbers and Clarendon. I mean, everybody had a different point of view as to regarding to their spending and how much they wanted to increase their budgets.
Well, and Shrewsbury was constantly cutting because we were so small and our, and our taxpayers were very sensitive. So, we were really super careful every year. I mean, we were where we are now 10 years ago.
Shrewsbury was hurt by the merger. They-
Well, that's because our, because we were so low.
Because they were so low, they actually had a tax increase.
But that was because we had all the phantom students. It wasn't really you guys. Don't worry.
It's just a way to run it.
Yeah. It was, it was more complicated. Yeah, it was, it was more complicated.
So I guess on this, we're just promoting Monday at 5:15 and we'll have.
For the public and then six o'clock.
For the public, six is, uh.
Yep.
And we'll have the principals send out on Friday, the reminder on Friday.
Yes. And I'm going to reach out to Jim Sabatasso at the Herald. Uh, and I think the, the Monday finance discussion is going to be far more in the weeds of, okay, what did we cut last year? What were the implications? If we were to lower that rate, what would the implication be? Implications be? What would that look like? What is, what is, where are we trying to go? And then we can do what we need to do to have a proposal.
Yeah, I don't, I, like, I would hate to see our district do, I mean, we're, in Vermont, we still have people like, you know, I mean, we have a, a lunch program that might be an outsourced. But there's no schools in, in bigger communities that, that still have custodians that actually are employed by the district. That have, you know, support staff that is employed by the district. Everybody is outsourced, everything to, to get that last dime out. And I am not suggesting that. Because I don't think it does anybody any good, but there's a lot of pressure on people.
All right.
Yeah, thank you to everybody for the discussion there.
Let's move on to the school garden activities account?
That's an easy one. Uh, we had just done one for rock climbing, uh, school garden. And this is actually the Mill River School Garden. And I will show you something. Uh, Mike Gamache, uh, shared this with me the other day. This is actually, if you can get that, William. Uh, this is a former student's artwork. Uh, and Mike Gamache had a test run of these done. And they are planning on selling these as a fundraiser to support the Mill River Garden. Well, to do that the right way, you need a student activities account. So, uh, to collect that money and have it, have it tracked appropriately and spent appropriately. So I would ask that the board, uh, reach out to Mike or me if you want to purchase a T-shirt in the future. Uh, but I would also ask the board to, uh, make a motion that we create a Mill River Student Activities Account for the school garden.
So moved.
A second.
A second.
Somebody. All in favor?
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, and the next is amendment of the 403. Stan!
Yeah, I'll let you do this one.
I don't have it in front of me, so this is all from memory. But the, uh, our 403B administrator is, uh, is asking us to adopt a amendment to our 403B plan. Uh, the IRS has allowed for certain hardships to be allowed under the 403B plan. For example, a person loses their job, they can withdraw, withdraw money from that 403B without penalty and have a extended time to pay that money back to the, to that fund. That's us, that's what they would consider a hardship. So they're asking us to adopt that amendment to our 403B plan. And it's all related to hardships that the IRS.
Do we have? I, I missed the language. Was it in our packet?
Is it? Yeah.
Yeah, it's a page and a half.
Is it a motion to amend our 403B plan based on the information we were provided? Is that?
I could move that. I would move that.
And I would second that.
I just wasn't sure how to structure that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on it?
Stan, nothing else there that impacts us out of that?
No, it doesn't, we don't, the plan is fully, it's a 100% employee contribution only. So it's really affects them only.
Yeah, it's strictly just terminology.
Right.
Good question.
Well, as it, as it was sent to us, and again, you don't have a copy. It says, as of this day, January 2009. Just throwing that out there.
That's what the form says? That came from, that came from our administrator.
Yeah, one of them, the, the, at that bottom line?
No, it's at the top.
Oh, because the bottom line says 2002, or 22.
I don't know if that's when the plan was originally adopted, but.
Maybe.
That might have been when they, the district adopted.
Yeah, because the bottom, the bottom line is in the witness where the district filed this resolution and amendment to be adopted on this day of blank 2022. Does that fix?
Oh, to get one signed?
Only thing I would say is that the board authorized the superintendent or his designated.
Oh, and I, okay.
I can stop by and sign, I can sign it tomorrow or something. Actually, yeah, I can sign it tomorrow after I get out.
Okay.
Um, so all in favor of that motion? We are good. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you and all. Yes, stop by tomorrow. Um, okay, on to BJ with, uh, tech bid.
Adding money to our budget.
Hmm?
Nothing.
Yeah. The mic kicked that off. If you need a little bit of a copy to see what the cover sheet is for the bids, let me know. I have a couple extras. Uh, if not, it's up here. Ultimately, the technology personnel, we have two full-time people inside our building, um, or inside our district all time, plus some remote support. That contract is up as of the end of this year, at the end of the school year. And so we needed to either, so I actually put it back out to bid. Um, I had two companies that bid on it. One is the current company we have. Um, a second company who showed interest. And I also put together a plan with Stan of what would it look like that was feasible if we did it internal? Um, and that's what I put in the plan here today. As you're thinking about budgets, I just wanted to put this thing out here because this is not a cost savings. This is, uh, trying to put the least amount of increase together. Uh, this year, we're paying basically $152,000 for two people plus remote support. It, with this, with Zones, which is the current company we're going with, the exact equivalent service from what I can find in the statement of work, uh, would change to $253,000.
Holy crap.
So an exact increase for what the statement of work says, it looks like it would be $100,000 more.
Did they give you any kind of justification for that increase?
Costs and things like that. Um, they did provide two options. There's been some services that we have not used, some level three services, which is kind of like, hell breaks loose and we really need the top-level person. Uh, we have not needed that, from what I understand, in our entire contract. So they did break that out. And that was, uh, both companies did that. And my in-house support expects that if all hell breaks loose, we'll be finding some emergency funds or something to solve it. Um, so I, when I was comparing this, I was taking that out and doing the lower costs. Zones, our continued service, had $210,138 per year for the next three years. Acture, which is the second bid, and like I said, if you guys want, I have that written right here. Acture, which is the second bid. It's year one cost for that support is $187,117. And they built in a 4.5 increase yearly over the next three years. And in-house, what I did is I took a comparable salary for general help desk support, added on to family plans and everything else that Stan said I needed to add on when employing somebody. Um, and we came out with a number that was $176,000. And Brian is pretty sure we can also subsidize that even further with maybe another $100,000 from grant funding.
To keep it in-house?
That's in-house is what I think we can do.
So what BJ is saying is this represents a increase in budget for tech.
Yes.
And, and that means when we cut tech last year, we knew that we were not going to be able to maintain one-to-one K-12 by making that cut. We supplemented the budget this year with some S or grant funds to maintain that one-to-one short-term. We know going into next year with no increase, we're going to struggle to maintain one-to-one. Uh, we can continue to use some of our S or grant funding to, to purchase devices to offset the increase in the tech budget that this represents. And, and your question, Adrian, around, uh, why is our current company raising costs so much? They've been trying to for a long time. Uh, they, they came in the door knowing that they were giving us a deal because they wanted to form a relationship. Uh, and they had done a lot of business in New York, but not a lot in Vermont. So I think we all knew going into it. And they've, they've worked with us. Uh, there've been some good contract people, some good salespeople there that over the years we've worked and negotiated and we've been able to figure that out. The last contract we did with them was a five-year contract that had built in like 2% increases. Because if they knew they were locked in for five years, they were comfortable sticking it out with us because they knew that they were, they were not doing incredibly well with our account. So they knew that five years, they could get in better standing with our account. Then a pandemic happens, you know, then worker, workers are harder to find. And now if you're a tech worker, gosh, I bet you can go make a heck of a lot more other places. So they're, they're seeing additional problems due to, due to the pandemic. But our account was always pretty razor-thin with them anyway, if that makes sense. So this has been a long time coming. And I think some of the, uh, staffing shortages that are hitting everybody, bad timing, bad timing for that too.
How are we going to be able?
We knew that was coming.
Yeah, how are we going to be able to staff for this? Do you think you're going to have problems?
Um, I am hoping that at least the two staff that we have on board would apply to continue working with us. I.
We have good relationships with them.
Does that, does that screw up our contract? I mean, are we allowed to hire their people?
Uh, we, they do not have, so previous to Zones, uh, when we worked with Wild Branch, they had some pretty, uh, from what I understand, some pretty interesting, uh, non-compete clauses and documents that they had their employees sign off on. Zones does not.
And I give one of.
So this all has to be by the end of the, sorry, this, by the end of the school year? So June.
Contract is up.
Yep.
30.
June 30th, yeah.
And, and I'm not going to state this correctly because I don't exactly remember how to say it. But wasn't, isn't there some funds that we used to get back from technology? What the heck was it called?
E-Rate, I think is what you're thinking of.
Yeah.
And that is currently reimbursing, um, upgrades to our Wi-Fi and our internet is what that's really covering right now. And that covers some high-level, um, infrastructure.
Yeah.
I do have one additional comment to your last one, then I'll test again.
Okay.
While it's not ideal, if we are, do this in-house and we can't find somebody for a couple of months, at least we're still not paying the contract for this couple of months. So that is.
Have we been left without people?
Yes. Yes.
By them?
Yes.
I mean, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And if it takes them two months to hire, it takes them two months to hire, we're still under.
And they don't provide any other backup and, any other backup support in that period of time?
I think from the, I would, from the impression I'm getting, what it is, is they have the remote help desk support. Um, and even, they were pushing that, one of the companies was even pushing that, kind of reducing it down to one person and then more remote help desk. Um, I had pushed back on that.
How do all these scenarios protect us in the ca, in the case of somebody trying to attack our system? I mean, I mean, I know it happens, you know? So do we have, would we have enough protection doing this all in-house and, and hoping we're doing, or, or do, would we?
It'd be the same.
Be more comfortable having bigger companies out there to help us recover if something bad happened? Because it might.
I think as we shifted to using more Chromebooks and cloud-based technology, the effects that an in-house attack would have on us would be less.
About all of our financial stuff?
In the cloud.
Already in the cloud.
Somebody else manages that security.
So.
Well, just because it's in, okay, some, so somebody else has their big security system up there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Because just being in the cloud doesn't do anything.
And that was an intentional choice that we started making where anything, like our library software used to live on a machine in district. If we put the library software with the company somewhere, they manage the security on that device now versus us managing the security on the device. They do it for a living. They can, they have efficiency of scale, we don't. So most, our financial software used to be on ha, in, onsite, in-house. And if something happened to it, heaven forbid the room flooded that had it, you know?
I'm more worried about somebody just infiltrating and doing something bad. I mean, it happens all the time. School districts.
Yeah.
Hospitals, you know, I mean.
Their servers are far more. Their servers are far more secure than ours are.
Unless you really want to increase the budget, we could do it in-house, but.
Well, yeah, I just wasn't sure how.
I'm not looking forward to it.
How much you'd be able to do, you know, if, if we just gave you that budget.
Doing it in-house would put added work on me in terms of level-two networking support. So level, think of level one as generic help desk. I'm going to help fix the Chromebook when the screen breaks. I'm going to help set it up, printers, copiers. Level two is the switch get set up in foundations, which was one of the things that did have to get set up this year. This year, we were able to call up the remote tech people to say, hey, please come set that up. Uh, next year, if we did this in-house, that would be me and the team doing that. It works because I have done that work in the past in other school districts. Um, I think what you'll find is if there are infrastructure, uh, needs, I may, you may see more, here's the infrastructure piece and the cost to install it and set it up. So instead of paying it upfront as a remote personnel, we have so many hours, it would be more. We have this project. This is what it comes, costs for equipment. This is what it's going to cost for installation of that equipment. That's where I'm hoping to go with this. And then I can pick up the lower-level help networking needs, uh, myself.
In, in our current contract and the scope of work, it doesn't include security work, right? I don't think it does. Because they've, that we, we inquired with them a couple of years back around, hey, how can you help us be more secure, things like that? And they, we met with them, we did some, some, uh, brainstorming, and then they gave us a quote. And it was high. If we wanted them to support security in-house. Like what can we do, uh, what can Zones do to secure our services here? And it, it was a high add-on price, if that makes sense.
And the model that the education system has with cloud-based computer, with Chromebooks and cloud-based tools and moving everything outside of our network. So our focus is going to be on internet. Wi-Fi and internet out reduces the impact very much on, and reduces the need. Where a lot of the quotes that Brian was talking about in a lot of these businesses are used to working with banks, used to working with, you know, the hospital.
Global Foundries.
Global Foundries.
It's another Zones customer, yeah.
Um, so.
We're nothing compared to that contract, yeah.
Their security needs and their effect if something happens in the school, in their building, um, is high. I mean, GE gets hit with something that brings down their network for a week, that's millions of dollars. of dollars. Our school system, if we come, if we have to give up computers for a week, students will still be educated.
They're going to hate it, but they're going to do it.
You know, it's kind of like the power outage situation. We'll still get, they will still get educated, we're not.
It'll be fun for a little while, actually.
Education while I get that up and going, if I have to hold her apart.
Oh, yeah, true. How much more work does that add to your job?
It adds some, but one of the things I'm hoping to offload and switch to the IT support is, right now, I'm doing a lot of rostering of students. So when we have our STAR 360 reports, all those students have to get brought in, learning without tiers, or keyboarding without tiers, our keyboarding software, there's a lot of different software pieces that all require usernames. I'm trying, I'm hoping to, if I do this in-house, that's going to be one of the things I want to put on the responsibility of one of the two IT people in-house. That should free up times that where I can work on networking. One of the advantages of networking is that it's usually seldom needed. Once it's set up, it kind of goes until there's either a major problem or I'm looking to self-update and I'm going to be involved whether it's, in my time is going to be involved whether I'm working with an engineer or whether I'm doing it myself at those times that we need to change configurations or anything like that. So.
In light of the fact that your recommendation is that we move IT services in-house, I would like to make the motion that we adopt your recommendation.
I'll second.
Is that the best way to word it, Brian? Okay.
Any more discussion on it?
And I want to thank you, BJ, for your presentation and I'm, we have really talented, Brian, you as well, we have very strong IT personnel at the helm, which is really important. So thank you both.
And it's been having great, having BJ here. I was counting down till July 1 so I could start handing stuff to him and he's been fantastic about grabbing everything up there in his way and running with it. You know, he knows what he's doing, but our systems are different, so, but he's diving in and getting moving.
So all in favor of moving all of our IT to in-house? Hope you're happy with what you asked for. Yeah. There's no stepping back now.
There's no stepping back, but I think it is the least increase.
That was it.
Keep the same service, which I think in terms of budgeting, you guys are going to be talking about it a lot.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, BJ.
You're welcome.
So on to committee reports. Personals first.
Yeah, and one addition that I sent today, I believe.
Oh, yes.
Yep. Sorry for that being last minute. That was something that did just pop up. As I was meeting with Carrie, our last meeting, as she was heading on her way out, we had a conversation around the timing of Teresa Sayer, who we approved at our last personnel meeting, our last full board meeting, to come on. Because of the timing of her coming on mid-December and some of the pieces that are going to fall between now and then, Carrie and I were talking about how do we best support Teresa coming on? And Carrie agreed to come on as a consultant to do that work, the terms of that consulting agreement being no more than 40 hours, a set period of time, and that she would be working directly with Teresa and she would be helping her with some of the nitty-gritty detail things like billing that's got to happen at a certain time of the month. And because of that timing, we don't want, we don't want the billing to not work. So Carrie was, I think, very gracious in saying, I'll do this work and it's work at a consulting rate that's really reasonable compared to what her daily rate would have been under contract, benefits and all that with it, too. So I think huge support in bringing Teresa on. We are not paying a director of after-school for a period of time until Teresa comes on. So it's not that it's a huge cost we're incurring, it's just an unbudgeted cost and we're going to shift some dollars. So Stan and I talked about it and we thought it was, it was better to bring it than not bring it, just in case. We always want to do things in a way that are transparent.
So I would make a motion to.
Authorize superintendent to sign.
The contract for.
Consulting services.
Yes. That's my motion. Thanks for saying that.
Liz already seconded, way before you started.
You didn't even know what you were seconding.
I did, though. It's right in front of me. My hearing is delayed, you know that, so sorry.
So any more discussion?
Questions?
All in favor? Okay. Is that it for personnel?
That's it for personnel. We'll be meeting, well, actually.
I was going to say it's not.
We were going to talk about whether we needed to meet the first Monday in December or not.
I don't have contracts lining up, so no need to meet, thank you, BJ, no need to meet for contracts on my end. And I can always reach out in a week or two if that changes, but.
So.
Cool. I have a calendar in front of me. So that would have been on the 7th of December?
Yes.
Do you want to push it to the 21st?
No.
No, you want that?
I think his proposal is to skip it a complete month.
You want to skip a whole month?
Yeah, let's skip December 6th. I think we're okay because everything.
Here's what I'll do, Lynn. I'll call you on like the 29th or of November or something and I'll just double-check because we would warn it the end of that week or so, so I'll just.
I'm not going to send you an agenda.
I'll just touch base with you like a day or two before we would have to warn it just to confirm, but for now, tentatively, no meeting?
That's the way we'll play it. So at this point, there is no December 7 personnel meeting at 6 o'clock.
No meeting in December?
Just say no meeting December 6, December 7 to 6.
Okay.
I don't want to say no meeting in December because if something comes up.
Then we may have one.
At this point in time, no December 6 meeting.
December 7.
Okay, can I be quiet now?
I was saying 6 to 7.
That was a lot of work.
Okay, so that brings it to me for policy. And it was a very productive night. And let me read my hand scratching because you have to forgive me, I have not had time to read this up.
What's F-13?
So F-13 is admission of residents and all we wanted to do was send it back for first read to adjust the, because we've reviewed it, we want to adjust the dates on it.
F-13 were rescinding because.
Oh, wait, there is that word.
Yeah. F-13 is rescinding.
That I had such a hard time with.
It's now a statute that declares what a resident student is. So the policy isn't needed and it was removed.
By the school board.
School Board Association.
Yep.
And the F-14 is where.
Never, don't, no.
Oh, I'm not going, no.
Yes, F-14, yes.
The copy of the, I don't know what it is, but it was the copy.
So we have a motion?
Okay, so we need, motion for F-13 to be.
Rescinded.
Rescended from our.
Just rescinded.
Rescended. I hate that word.
Are we, are we doing that now?
No, we need to.
Because, or are we putting it on next agenda?
Next agenda.
Next. We need to put it out for Warren.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll do first reading of, first notice of rescinding and first reading of F-14.
Correct.
And then we'll, we'll approve that to go on to second reading. Okay. Rescinding 13 and first reading of 14. Okay. So I'll do that agenda building.
That was the.
14 is the non-resident students.
Yeah, it's the one that's just got straight copy.
Yep. Now we have a couple tabled. So policy will meet again on the 13th of December.
There should have been one more.
No.
Did it get tabled?
It got, we tabled by three.
Yeah. Equity we tabled and.
The new one we tabled. And the school handbook, I, oh, E-12 needs, yes, I need to change.
It needs to be changed and brought up for a first reading.
Yes. So I make a motion for, I have to edit it, though. That needs to be.
We have another two weeks.
Yeah. Thinking.
Yeah, that was.
Sorry.
We're just trying to get the numbers up to you.
Okay, so E-12, school handbooks policy needs to be edited, but I need to send it out for a first read after I do edits.
Okay. Yeah, and we just need to attach that to the board packet for the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. So first reading on F-14 and E-12.
And E-12 on December 7.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
And December 13 is the next policy.
13th at 5:30 is the next policy meeting.
Okay.
Um, sorry. Do we have buildings and grounds update?
No, nothing much going on, kind of quiet.
Okay.
Like vacation all the time. Now we got some snow coming, right? That's snow, everybody's got snow now. There may be some changes, we'll have to see what Tim's going to come up with. I'll give him a shot, talk or two.
When is the next meeting?
With building and grounds? I don't know. So it probably wouldn't, most likely will not be the next, the next one will not be, say, next week, be the week after, give a couple, a couple of weeks to play around, let the turkeys and stuff become lunch. But you know, I was looking at some of the stuff that we've been going through with the monies now, the list will get to me pretty shortly, but been some funny things going on with, with materials in the building, things that I'm sort of not sure, maybe something's just me, we'll see what happens. But we'll take a look.
Okay.
Is the wood, the wood boilers working now?
I have not heard that it's not. I had not heard that the part didn't come in. So I, we have heard some great feedback that folks are saying, oh, gosh, when, when the bell rings for the first period of the day, we're, we're where we need to be and we're warm and everybody's pretty happy about that. Might cost a little extra money to do that, but.
Switters, switters are good. Um, there was no community engagement.
Correct.
Meeting for this month, so I'm assuming that the next meeting will be the 13th, right after policy, but we'll get confirmation from Sam when she is feeling better.
Yep.
So finance, Liz.
Good evening, everyone. We have the following payroll and pay orders for approval. Paywa, the payroll warrants include dated November 4, a payroll order in the amount of $615,065 and 50 cents, a payroll order dated November 8 in the amount of $2,146.13 and a payroll order in the amount of, I'm sorry, dated November 16 in the amount of $5,055.66 for a grand total of $622,267.29. For pay orders, we have from the general fund, a pay order in the amount of $305,715.25. From our after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of $1,650.11. From our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of $3,249.29. And from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $12,886.70 for a grand total of $323,501.35. And from our student activity accounts, we have a pay order in the amount of $3,621.41. And I move that we accept and approve these pay orders and this payroll as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Adrian. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, everybody. Our next meeting is Monday at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
You're going to have the community.
5:15.
5:15.
5:15.
Yes. Yep, we're starting at, yep, thank you for that. We're starting at 5:15 with a community forum.
Yep, thank you.
On to, do we have any other legal business? And agenda building.
Equity, we had postponed for one meeting. Jody's getting back late tonight from DC, that LNIC work, so we'll do equity. We have high school departments on the list, too, to hear from, so we'll be back at Mill River.
Student input.
Yes, needs to be, yep.
Remind me, I'm drawing a blank on that.
Our student representatives are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, 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 exactly. Our student reps will be back on there. I have a request that we look at our sub-rate. We'll have a proposal to update our paraprofessional and our teacher substitute rates because January 1, the minimum.
Yeah.
Why am I not able to say that word?
Because it's nine.
Minimum wage, that's what it is. Yeah, minimum wage is going to go up to a point that our paraprofessional sub-rate actually is lower than minimum wage, so we need to bring that. So we'll put that on the agenda. I have a question, but it's after that agenda building. Anything else we need on agenda building?
I don't think so. We'll have our committees.
Okay. I have a longer-term agenda building request. I didn't think about this, but our, our second December meeting is the last day of student attendance before break and we did schedule a school presentation, so I was wondering if we don't do a school presentation on that night. That seems like a not-great night to have one teacher group have to come and present on where other teacher groups don't, you know, get stuck with a terrible day like that. Our first January meeting, we did not have a school presentation, so if folks are comfortable, we would do two December meetings at Mill River. We wouldn't have a school presentation on that second one. I think that makes some sense, too, because we might have a budget proposal at that second one that we publicly have a little bit on. So that would free up some space for that, wouldn't be asking teachers to come in the last.
January, where are we back?
January, that would, if we did that and bumped to January, that would put us to Wallingford for the January meeting.
Oh, that's not too bad. I'm just thinking.
Is that reasonable for like longer-term?
Can we do remote from, if we do a Wallingford meeting? I'm thinking January.
Thinking weather.
We were just talking about having, having school visits when the weather was good so that we could stick to Mill River so that we would always have a.
Yeah. It's, it's hard to do. It's really hard to do. It would be, to do it in a way that's reasonable would be BJ packing up the conference room and hauling it to Wallingford.
I wasn't suggesting we do it, I'm suggesting that we put.
So can we put.
Yeah, the visits on hold.
I was not being clear, sorry.
Can we do that?
We can do that, but then we will not have the ability to hear from everybody twice as we had planned.
We can double up one month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can travel.
Have two meetings, you know, Wednesday and Thursday, the next.
Well, but we were rotating between high school departments, elementary, high school departments, elementary. So we wouldn't, we just happened to have the first meeting in January, didn't have a school group. There are a couple that don't have school presentations, but not enough to still hear from everybody twice, if that makes sense.
I don't remember that we decided to go everywhere twice. I thought that we were going to make sure we always went to every school once.
Well, we.
Now we're doing it twice so that we're going to Wallingford in January.
We had, we had mapped out a tentative schedule over the summer and, and we had said, this is a good tentative schedule, let's keep bringing it back up and revise as needed. So when we had talked in the summer, we had set two per year. We can absolutely change that because that's what we, we said at the time. It's nice to have a plan. change that, because that's what we, we said at the time. It's nice to have a plan, but then let's adjust the plan as we're going along.
I mean, we certainly could have just one month where we don't meet at Mill River. We'd need it to a million.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we did that last time, just to get it in.
Well, but we'd have to bump a high school department. Some, we, we may have to bump a high school department. So, you know, we heard from Math and ELA, we might not be able to hear from Math and ELA at the high school again in the spring. Does that make sense?
Volunteer if it's a horrible night, I just will come.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I'm not saying we can't do it.
It's all right.
You are from Shrewsbury.
I just want to, um, I just want to be clear if we're saying, "Oh, we can just shift it here," but the implications of that shift.
Yeah, I get it.
I want to be clear about what those are.
Yeah, I think we'll just have to-
And I am absolutely not tied to the schedule. As we said in the summer, it's great to have a schedule. Let's keep checking in and let's see if it still makes sense. But I got to know what we want to do. And I'm not hearing a strong consensus of what we want to do.
We're going to, I think, leave it.
Yeah, it's fine.
Adrian, you can drive to my house.
Just decide whether she's coming off the lot.
Yeah.
We're going to go to Wallingford.
Adrian can always make it to Wallingford, she just can't get home.
Yeah.
Yeah, tonight was pretty good.
I know, it's all downhill.
So-
And then it's just going back up.
A little slippery.
In, in the interest of time, I'm going to bump Wallingford to January. We do have a December meeting where we can revisit that and see if it makes sense. I will attach the yearly calendar in the board packet again, so people can look over it. And that way, I don't have to tell you what the implications might be. You can just look at it, and, and you can think about at your leisure what seems to make sense, yeah. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do we need an executive session?
So when's our next meeting?
Hold on, hold on!
In 2023, Len. It's getting close.
Um, an executive session?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, so next board meeting is December 7th-
At Mill River.
At Mill River.
Hybrid.
At 7.
Yep.
And no Personnel Committee meeting in December.
No Personnel before. All right, consensus to adjourn.
There's going to be an extra Wednesday.
All right, have a good night.